Please stand for the flag of the reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of seven, six, twenty twenty-two, regular session. No, just wait. I make a motion except the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of seven oh six twenty twenty-two. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Derek, you want to move out there? You want to go ahead?
I'm fine with our whole business. We'll take care of this.
Citizens input, we have anything? One, comment twice? All business then, attorney report.
Guys, one thing to talk about, get taken care of, was a resolution and there was an agreement that is basically being adopted or passed by that resolution concerning Norfolk Southern and the West Street crossing. This is something that I've worked with Jamie, and Jamie's really done the work on the thing, but he's worked with Norfolk Southern. There's an agreement that was attached to that resolution and that, if you're willing, needs to be approved, but the gist of this is that West Street crossing there at the railroad tracks would be closed. Town would receive the sum of forty thousand dollars, but there would also be upgrades to the crossings at Linden and Kennelworth Roads, provided that we enter into this agreement. So we put that together, as I understand it, I think Norfolk Southern's okay with the agreement as we've got it drafted now. They wanted us to sign first and get it back to them, which, okay, we can do that. The thing I'm going to point out is that the timeframe commences from when they sign it, and that's when the thirty-four days, which is when they have to issue the payment, that's when that starts. I'm fine to sign this and get it to them, but if we don't have this thing back in three months, then I would say, we'll do another resolution to rescind it if they want to kind of jerk us around. I don't, I'm not saying that's what they're doing, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but I'm just saying, fine, if they want us to sign first, so we can.
On that, what are they going to do down here? Down here, anything special?
As far as?
When they close it?
They'll put a guardrail with a bunch of signs and stuff on it, reflectors, and he sent me something, kind of show me what they've done in the past, but they'll need all the pavement up, all that stuff.
Looks like that works.
That's what they've done in other places, so.
So do they, is it going to come to Broadway then? Just wait? You know, wait till during the other way, when they close it?
No, it'll just go like twenty-five feet off the tracks or forty feet off the tracks.
Okay.
So they will shut the whole road down, it'll just be the crossing.
Right, but.
And then after we accept this, we'd be responsible for the signage and stuff down the road if it got hit or something happened to it, from what I understand.
So they're only responsible for putting the initial new stuff up, and then after that, weeds.
Yeah, it looks like a guardrail almost, which, I mean.
I just showed them that.
Unless somebody drives through or something, I don't know what we'd have to take care of.
Yeah, other than a new guardrail.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe a couple posts.
Just, yeah, big reflective signs.
So then, on the other side of that, with the Dewey Street or Linden Road and Kennelworth Pond Street, you know, that's kind of what we're thinking for the future of the truck routes, so that's why we're, put that in there to get those beefed up when, you know, when that bridge comes in.
Well, they improved the grade to those, as part of the.
We discussed that, they'll allow us to do it, you know, the county or us, whoever.
To take most of them out.
Yep, they're only going to take care of what's inside the crossings.
Forty feet or eighty feet, whatever that is.
I don't even know if it's that much, I think it's twenty, twenty-five. They'll let us pay all the way to the crossing, usually you can't do that, but they're going to allow us to pay all the, all the way to the crossing, that way we can fix the grade and all that stuff.
And that's in this agreement?
Yeah, yep. And usually we'll have to pay for a railroad attendant to be there while they're going to cover all those costs in the agreement and all that stuff, so.
What's that resolution number, Lisa? I just got twenty twenty-two dash online.
Yeah, I don't, my computer died, so I couldn't get the resolution. Let me go over everyone then. It's written down in.
Notice this twenty twenty-two dash.
I'm just standing, is that what? I messed up. I didn't touch it.
You sent an email.
The way Lisa sent it.
It's not in.
Yeah, I got one from Derek.
From Derek, that's our business.
This is a resolution.
Yep. Last sentence, we'll need a resolution.
Chicken. Yeah, I just got twenty twenty-two also.
Twenty-two fourteen.
Make a motion to pass resolution number twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, resolution of the Argus Town Council approving an agreement for elimination of grade crossing with Norfolk Southern Railroad.
We have a motion and a second to pass resolution number twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, resolution of the Argus Town Council approving the agreement with the elimination of grade crossing. Any further comment on any of this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen passed.
Do you want to get that? I don't have a contact.
Yeah, I'll, I think Randy's the one that has to sign it.
The resolutions.
Everybody, okay, well.
And then Randy signs the agreement, but I can send him everything.
Okay.
And say, let's go, let's get.
Yeah, if you email to me, I'll send it, and we'll get it taken care of.
Okay, here, yeah, yeah, there's a place where I have to sign it, it's got to be you.
Can you email that resolution full signed and the agreement to Jamie as well?
Do you have the resolution? Because I didn't realize I was freaking out tonight, so.
That's the agreement, it has to be signed by me, but the resolution has to be signed by council.
Okay. I think I only got, sent them the one, but I can send everything.
She's going to get everything signed back to you and I. Maybe I will have it here.
I think there's some extra monies I can apply for through the state for closing these down, I think it's between ten and fifty thousand, so I'm going to apply for that too, we'll see what we get, if anything.
So the grants or those matching?
There's, the state's offering something to close rails, so.
Is that part of that rail safety initiative?
I think so, yeah.
And the Fed might even be involved in some of that.
Well, maybe it's that, maybe the Fed gives them state money, I don't know, but.
I think I read something about that.
Actually, no housing, that house down in the corner, that's a Dewey Street address, isn't it? You went by the container facility.
Yeah.
So who is it?
Yep, Calhoun still owns it, he's selling online contract.
So there's actually no housing?
The agreements.
Yeah.
Only this ordinance, it's under new business, if you don't mind if we.
It's newer.
Jump around to that, it's on the Deerfield Meadows rezoning issue.
There, it's an ordinance versus a.
I just thought that was the same one. Guys, this is something that been in front of Plan Commission. And I'm sorry, guys, we actually need to have a public hearing, so we need to do that. So first, we need to open this for public hearing concerning a rezoning of Deerfield Meadows subdivision, all of those lots to be rezoned to R two. But after our public hearing, which we're about thirteen minutes late to conduct, then we can consider that.
I make a motion for a public hearing.
A second, Phil.
We have a motion and a second for a public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, rezoning of property within jurisdiction of town Argus Deerfield Meadows. Any questions? Any public comment about this?
And I'll just state that for the, for the record here, that the notice of the public hearing was published in the pilot, Plymouth Pilot, on September tenth, two thousand twenty-two. This has also been in front of the Plan Commission, they had a public hearing as well, they passed a resolution, it was two thousand twenty-two oh two. They forwarded this to the town council with a favorable recommendation, and again, what we're talking about here is rezoning lots one through and including thirty-two, that's all of them, in Deerfield Meadows subdivision from, it actually was heavy industrial, and now we're rezoning those to R two, which is residential two. So that's what's before you this evening, once it's time to vote, but I understand right now we're still in a public hearing.
Motion, oppose, public hearing.
Aye.
And a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this resolution ordinance. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Now, we have free consideration ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash twelve, this is the ordinance that would accept that rezoning and allow those, all of those lots, individual lots, to be rezoned to R two.
Make a motion to get a majority favorable to pass this ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve on all three readings.
Can I do something further? Wait, can I make a motion to suspend the rules?
Got to get this, that approved first, because Derek hasn't changed it.
I'm sorry?
We have to get a majority to approve before we can do it on all three, before we can suspend rules.
Well, you vote to sus, you make the motion to suspend the rules, so long as you get the majority, then you're okay to move forward with it.
So George made a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
You're thinking longer on mine, so.
I know you guys do it differently.
Make a motion, but you got your motion already on the board.
Yeah, I made a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve on all three readings.
A second, Phil.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve on all three readings. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That one passed also.
Make a motion to set attorney report, if he's done.
Randy, you have that ordinance in there.
So all ready for you?
I don't have anything further to report, and yeah, that also takes care of that other issue under the new business on those rezones.
Motion to approve attorney report. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve attorney reports. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Attorney report. Approved.
We only need an extra ordinance, it's right there, if you turn it over, they're seeing what they've done, that is the pass. If it passes.
Now, this is all getting passed in the first reading, right?
Yes, and we only need to do second and then pass it, and then sign out. But George has to abstain from voting. You not in the fire department?
Fire territory, do I start this?
Oh, yeah.
I don't think so, because you just approved, you're not actually approving their budget, just reviewed it.
When it's approved, yeah, there was a statute that talked about, yeah, you, but now that there is the fire territory.
I'm still on it, though.
You're still on the.
Fire territory.
I think it's had to.
I have not looked at that since that's been.
But I can still abstain as long as I'm equal.
Try the same thing to do.
I don't, I thought we had to approve that one.
Well, you're not actually approving it, you just reviewed it, so I don't think they're actually.
Well, it's, it's approved through our budget, so yes.
I'm just going to abstain so I don't argue with it. It's a second, third reading.
Only have five months left, I may not do this.
Yeah, we are, because it's approved.
It's not anything to do with their budget, there's a statute that says a piece of.
Oh, no, nevermind.
It is approved through our budget.
I think the state's idea is going to still not.
You can vote on salary, you can't vote on budget. So we need a motion to, on the second, third reading, for the.
I can make the motion. To pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven on the second, third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven on the second and third reading. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stated.
Three ayes and an abstain.
Motion twenty twenty-two dash eleven has passed. Those are two copies.
Probably because I printed it.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm going to skip out then, guys, if that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek. Thank you, guys, sorry, won't make it happen.
Other old business, anything else needs to be brought up? Is it on there? Erica, there's a little box over inside. Get your glasses, you're adjusting.
She was helping, she felt abstaining, so I'm.
I feel yours did.
Got those fingers and toes here.
Okay, there's no other old business for the move on, Department head reports police.
No, 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 no. Halloween.
Halloween.
Oh.
So I've been getting a lot of calls asking us when we're going to have Halloween. WNDU wants to put it out early, the paper called, I think, and, or some, some paper called and asked when we were having it, and so I just figured, let's get it over with. We always have it on Halloween.
It's a Monday.
Last year we made it five to eight, but I will tell you, there's somebody that hands out candy from seven to eight, I only got the older children. And, you know, I, I'm not telling you what you should do, but Halloween is on a Monday this year, so.
Can you all Saturday, go on Wednesday night?
Do what you want. But.
Another problem we ran into, we did it different nights, then you have kids from every other town, and these people run out of candy and it's a fiasco.
Three dollar nine cents for a bag of candy.
It is, but.
Not anymore. Inflation just hit.
It's not a bad thing we get other communities coming on an off night, because they're going to stop and maybe buy gas, they're going to stop and maybe buy pop, they're going to stop and maybe buy a burger.
I'm not.
Well, I think like on a Saturday, that's what I was thinking, that, you know, instead of on a school night.
But then you get a lot of people that aren't home on weekends either, so.
I don't want to do it on a Sunday.
Sleep on Halloween like we're that for the rest.
Which is, let's just do it on Monday night.
I make a motion that Halloween be on, Halloween trick or treat be on Halloween from five to seven.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second that the Halloween trick or treat time be on the thirty-first of October from five to seven. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There you go. Now, we can go to the department.
Other new business.
I did that.
Oh, you did?
He said there's no more.
We said there's no more, you didn't? Yeah. Go ahead, Corey.
So you should have my report, only got to take it, I guess. You notice it's harvest time, the tractor, silage tractor's been going through town, we keep, trying to keep a good eye on them, and so far we haven't had no complaints in having had anybody doing anything illegal. Contacted, that contacted Ford of the truck, and they said it was, they thought it was in Kansas, I think, doing something, I don't know, he's got a VIN number, he thinks by the end of this month, first of October. Just wonder how that goes. You already answered my, I had a question about the chicken, but you already answered that. The only thing else I had was on the sixteenth, I think that was Friday, was that Friday? The sixteenth of Friday?
I think it was.
It was brought to my attention, it was like, right before shift change, we had a lady from Culver, brought her husband over here, and he was out of his wits, you might say, he had a loaded handgun and was going to hurt himself and anybody else that got in his way, so she dropped him off at the police department. So when Rodney got, Rodney was on duty, he got there, she told him what was going on, he went in the police department, he ran and fled the police department, so he called in some help and they located him in the new police department, he was hiding out with his loaded three eighty, and kudos to Deputy Bragg, he kind of talked him off the proverbial cliff, if you will, nobody was hurt.
That's twice Brad's done that, isn't it?
No, Officer Bragg, Deputy Bragg.
Old Bragg, I thought he was just. I thought he said Brad.
He wouldn't talk to anybody but Bragg, I guess, and so he was, got him to lower the weapon and take him into custody.
Kudos to Officer Bragg, please thank him.
Yes, and kudos to everyone else that assisted our department. That's all I have.
I have one question, Jamie, Jamie's here, and I know that you guys are working on the, the new addition over here. The front of the police department there, do we have some kind of formal signage being made for the front of that to say Argus Police Station or something for, to go on that new park yet, have you thought about that?
I haven't, we can look at something. What do we have over there?
This is what we have right in front here, is all we have, I don't know.
Well, I just, that new building, facing on that road, I had, I think, I don't know what it would cost.
No, I actually thought about that.
I thought that new building probably ought to have some kind, that's just my thoughts.
You think on the building?
Some kind of sign on the building, you know.
I get, would a sign out front do, like suffice, like a?
Yeah, well, I'm just like thinking some letters on the building or something.
Wooden sign or something?
Fan anchor could probably make something, I'm sure.
Something.
It says Argus Police Department, I just thought it would look a lot better from a street view instead of a sticker on a door.
And the building looked good.
Working the sun.
Yeah. I'd just be curious to see what you could come up with as well. But other than that, I stopped in down there, I told Jamie, Corey, I had stopped in down there, probably threw one of the officers for a little bit, because he didn't know who I was at first, but I, I actually went in and I walked through the building a couple times, and it was, looks like they're doing a good job in there, so I, I've been real, real impressed, so.
Kind of go through it every day, just, they're doing it well enough. From a layperson's viewpoint, I guess.
I didn't see anything that really stood out to me that caused me any concerns, I talked to Jamie about it yesterday, and I was very happy with everything I seen so far, so.
There's been a couple minor things, but they've corrected everything, so, yeah, they're easy to work with.
That's all I have.
Utility report.
Everything's going pretty good, we're getting finished up out of Deerfields of that Phase One, like I said in my report, we'll be starting the electric pretty soon. We need to get the pond finished up, and I'm going to try to get that seeded yet this year, but the building's going good, paving's finishing up, they put the base down today, tomorrow, I think they're putting a top coat on to finish it up, so everything's coming together pretty good, finishing up some of the stuff this year.
I was going to say, I know there's still some nice weather left in that, but you guys have, you guys and most of the contractors we've had in town have done a phenomenal job on everything that they've done, in my opinion, I mean, it's.
Yeah, Wildstone's been busy.
Yeah, I would.
Streets are starting to really look nice, the ones we've been doing.
Yeah.
They're real pleased, so.
And I've just submitted for next year, so we should be, find out what we're going to get for next year, so. So like, let's see, have any questions?
So did everybody get the email, Jamie, about the installing this building and also?
The change order?
Change order to start getting the quantity that tore down sometime, as soon as they can move stuff into the new park. All right, economic director.
Somebody's going to want to get yelled at.
You like me.
Because my contractors aren't working good.
I thought I was your contractor.
I didn't point anybody out.
That one falls under me, I'm assuming.
I think he just claimed them, I think we're good now.
Well, we're almost done, so hopefully. We're waiting on an arch, so Jamie and I went down today and went through a few more things, we have a meeting Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
If you want to come at eight. They'd already done two punch lists that they've been through, so we've got about eight more items we found that we want to ask about at least. So then hopefully your first meeting, the earliest, I'd rather not wait till the second, but maybe in the second we'll finalize that out. We just got noticed today, that second, or that grant we're going to apply for, we have to do that December twenty-second, so we have to have all this done before we can do that.
So they.
And that's that Oprah grant.
Yeah. They painted that wall, we're going to let that go?
They are supposed to come back down and redo that, I wasn't that concerned about that, because over time, the concrete's going to wear the same, it's going to virtually match, but I wish they would have made it darker, and I guess that's what they're going to try to do, but whatever.
Should have just put color on what I did.
Do you have a question? I go back to the, some of the original drawings, I see, they're not up there right now, but the.
The one that.
Like the old, like the old lights they put around here this week? I thought there was like supposed to be three strings across there.
Well, there were, so. And this is how some of this gets, so as we're down there talking, the guy says, oh, this, how about this, because this will do something different, well, then they do it, this opposite of what he said, so they are coming back and completing that as to what, how it was bent, so there'll be two more strings across there.
Okay.
They hung those with wire, if you look at them, so that's how, we originally were told there'd be too much of a sag in that line, and that they weren't going to be able to do that, but.
Did you take spray to hide your steam yet?
Yes, grass is coming up nice, it's irrigated. Yes, grass is coming up nice, it's irrigated, uh, and we gotta start watering some of that to the south. But we're irrigated, we were up there today, and it's really coming up.
Did they get all the irrigation working?
As far as I know.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything different. I ran it the other night, because I didn't know it was running, so it goes through, there's eight or ten different functions, I mean, it goes through all of them, or did, so.
So you guys come out?
Probably. That'd make the grass grow, okay. But that's pretty much all I have besides my report that I gave you.
Somebody had made a comment that, that thought, and it could just be because they were transplanted, that's kind of what I was thinking, but I'm gonna ask the question. Couple of trees up there, somebody said looked like they were dying.
Well, they're already placed two.
Okay, maybe that was what this.
I, I think we get one year warranty out of them.
Yeah, they're warranted, um, Mark's actually gone up and watered, some of those outside ones don't have irrigation, so until we can get them.
From the south end of the.
I thought those were supposed to have irrigation.
Not across the, the drive, we didn't.
You're talking to the south?
Yes.
Everything's around.
Those ones on the south, there's trees on the south there by the old.
Where they, yeah.
They don't, yeah, Mark Dean and, uh, the guys are running up there watering with the brush truck.
Very good.
Plan Director.
Probably heard enough from me tonight. Um, I've just, just been working on changes that we discussed earlier, and trying to get wording there, and, uh, make sure that we're, uh, coordinating the ordinance with the, uh, rezoning book.
I don't think that's over by the end. Ever.
Okay, last thing, claims, at least, the only thing I didn't have is the cover sheet.
Yeah, thanks for telling me that. So.
I could have.
I, the cover sheet is right here, if you wanna look at it, before you hear the claims, but, um, the claims are from September sixth of two thousand twenty-two to September nineteenth of two thousand twenty-two, and they total one hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and sixty-six cents. I really thought that I did put the claim sheet, I've been trying, since you guys said it was very hard to read it, by print it out and scan it in, so I've been trying to just do it from the computer itself as a PDF, and it seems to be coming through a lot better, so, but they are two separate ones, an Excel sheet, and one comes off my software, so I have been trying to put the two in there, but again, I didn't realize that the one sheet did not make it in.
Only question I had, there's two different claims about garage doors over there, but.
Yeah, I have no idea what's up with that, um, we had a police garage door and a fire department garage door, I don't.
The spring broke on the police door. Um, I think it was the same thing with the other door, too.
This is recently, yeah?
Yeah. The police was just, was it last week? I think it was last week, and the other one was probably a month ago.
Did they have to replace panels, though, too, because they had, like, section in there?
Uh, I think when it let go, it smashed that bottom one, I think. You know, if the door's going out and they snap, usually one or two of them panels.
It's one of those big springs, it's that, yeah. Yeah, those have got a lot of pressure on them. Both those claims were the same.
Yeah, the mounts were.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Makes sense, if it was two different one.
So, George, not to put you on the spot, but are we doing anything, how's concrete looking? I mean, are we doing anything at the cemetery this year, or no?
In October.
In October? Have you gotten any pricing or anything?
It's gonna be stupid, whatever it is, because everybody, we got the port.
Should we wait till spring? Or do you think that's gonna be worse?
It's gonna get you better. Because they cut us even more today.
Did they really?
Cut our allotment, two trucks, which doesn't sound like a lot, but that's two hundred yards worth. Yeah, they cut the allotment again today.
So I talked.
And that's nationwide, that ain't just Indiana, that's everywhere.
No, I get it, so I talked to the monument company, because we, um, agreed to buy that calibarium, and, um, they suggest that sixty inches, they said, um, that you could go forty-eight inches with, you know, some rebar or something in there, but he really suggests sixty inches deep. Um, so I don't know if you want to talk about whether we should do the whole row, or whether just do underneath the calibarium for now, which would be like ninety-one inches.
Well, it's not gonna get any cheaper. I mean, even, even if the, even if the shortage is gone, it's not gonna get cheaper. Still, you know what I'm saying, it's just, there's an allotment right now.
Yeah, if you want to.
It's, there's a premium, because they, uh, have so much per yard.
Okay.
And if you don't have a contract right now, that's what was bad, so, I mean.
I was just thinking, so, just to bring you guys up to speed, this is the year that we voted to kind of do the next section of the cemetery, so the next, what, five rows or whatever? But we also bought that cali, calibarium, and, um, that requires five feet of concrete basically under it, and the width of that, and in talking with George and stuff, we were thinking, maybe we just bury a strip that long, because these are eight feet wide, or eight feet long. So you could put two or three along a row, or four, you know, and buy one now, sell it, buy the next one, but we would always have the concrete.
Never had the footers in.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know what you guys wanna do, but I thought I would put that in at the end of the meeting, just to kind of.
Um, George, I'm completely ignorant when it comes to saying how much is, you know, it's gonna take to do that space, but it's kind of senseless, now. We've got that extra to do, send the semi truck out, not literally unfold.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's, it's also gonna be more than two trucks. And every truck has a boob charge, right? If it's under six yards, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
But they also, right now, have a premium charge on certain powders, if you want to do that, to get your job done. It's crazy right now, because they're, they're only allotted so much.
It sounds like fertilizer.
And they keep cutting that allotment down, because they're not giving it.
Well, I wanna get back to, make a motion on these claims from nine-six, two thousand twenty-two, to nine-nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, make a motion to pass those for one hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
We have a motion and a second to pass the claims from September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, to September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any further comment? Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn, all favor say aye.
Aye.